All right, so it's 6:31 and so I'd like to call the meeting to order. We should probably do a verbal roll call. Julie?
Julie Byers here.
Carol? You're muted, Carol.
Carol Hofstas here.
Lori?
Laura Schifrin here.
And Lance McNally here.
Okay, Michael's not.
And no, I don't show Michael. But...
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve Julie Byers as a member of the planning board this evening.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Lori?
Lori Schifrin, aye.
Carol?
Carol Hofstas, yes.
And Lance McNally, yes. All right, I do not have any additions or deletions unless Beth starts screaming at me. All right, she's shaking her head. All right, so was members of the master plan committee planning to participate?
I don't know. I think they, I think I sent them an invitation. I hope so. Pretty sure I did, yeah. So, I think the idea was work session for planning board. That was the vote.
All right, Andrea, do you have any comments?
Most of, majority of the committee are out of town this week.
Okay, so did we just want to go through it? So Lori, I wasn't at the last meeting. Is the intent for us as a board to go through this?
Um, yes. At the last meeting, when we got the V1 version of the final draft,
Yeah.
just before 5 o'clock, so nobody had a chance to look at that.
Okay.
Even though some of us had some of the chapters. So this was so that we would have the week to take a look at it and the members of the board could then voice their opinions in work session.
Okay. And then is the intent, Beth, to provide, if you could do some consolidated feedback to provide the master plan committee?
Sure, yeah, I can take notes. I'll take notes while you're discussing.
All right, so then let me just start this off. The first section about the town of Townsend, Massachusetts. So maybe we'll just go through it. My comments are as follow. So, and I can send this to you in a Word document with my comments, Beth.
Sure.
So first of all, I noticed that in the 2001, even though it's not a big deal, they basically had Townsend 42 miles from Boston and now we're 39.5. I don't know, maybe with climate change that we're getting closer to Boston, but I just, I noticed that.
I think it is 42. I always thought it was 42 in my travels.
Okay, well, anyway, I just noticed there was a discrepancy from the 2001 to the current one. I thought they did a good job in terms of pulling together a lot of stats on Townsend. Let me see, my other comment, I think that I had on the section is on page 11, there was a comment that, you know, about the uninsured persons is much higher than comparable areas. And I don't know what they meant by uninsured persons. Is, is it?
I had that same question was what was an uninsured person? I didn't understand that.
Yeah, I mean, is it uninsured in the standpoint of not having homeowner's insurance? Or rental insurance? Or is it uninsured from a medical standpoint? I'm just, I didn't understand what uninsured meant.
Okay, what page?
It's on page...
I didn't have page numbers on mine.
I don't have page numbers either.
Well, that's gonna be one of my comments. Please add page numbers.
Okay.
Comment too is there's no page number.
Okay.
All right.
I'm looking at page 12 of the Word document where it starts off, "Looking more closely at the cost of living, Townsend's median owner occupied housing values are much less than comparable areas with comparable related costs. Without a mortgage, rent is line with other areas with comparable costs. Also relevant is a level of uninsured persons."
Okay, I could screen share it if you guys, if that would be easier to, I don't know.
Yes, that would help.
Okay.
They have page numbers, so.
Okay. So Hartley, do you wanna, is that okay? If you want to screen, I can screen share or...
Lance? I just made you co-host. You can go ahead and do it.
All right, let's give it a try. Says host disabled participant screen sharing.
I'll try again. Can it go through now?
Yeah, it should be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so Beth, does it make sense that you sort of go through page by page and just say, does anyone have any comments?
Sure, and let me know where you were talking first. You started here, basically, in your 32.82.
Stop right there, and so right where it says 39.5 in the second paragraph.
Okay, yeah.
My comment was that the other master plan had it as 42 miles.
Okay, distance to Boston, got it. All right.
Nice question.
Yeah.
Sorry. So, I know I'm new and I'm sorry because I know you guys have been at this for a couple of years now, but when I looked up the, the chapter 41 and section 81D, there's, it's very specific what the elements of the master plan are supposed to include, and there's nine elements that are listed, and this doesn't seem to follow. I mean, I, the information might be all there, but it doesn't follow what the state has for elements. And when I looked at Pepperell and some of the other surrounding communities, they all followed this sort of pathway, and you can add other things, but there's a general sort of overlay. And what I was thinking was, if we want to ask the state for money of any kind, grants or whatever, and they say, where's your master plan? They want to see it the way they've ordered it, and I think that makes it easier for someone reviewing it to see if it's all concise and there. I just had a hard time because we focused a lot on the history of Townsend, which is fine, but it needs to sort of be reordered, I think.
Yeah, Julie, I'll echo that. I looked at, and that was one of my like overall comments, is I looked at the Pepperell's master plan, which I thought was very well organized. And I would encourage the master plan committee to sort of follow that same format. I agree with you 100%.
Thank you. I agree. And thank you, Beth, for sharing that. And the other one, they were both very informative.
Oh, okay, yeah. The other one, one was basically a format where it seems like, I'll show it to you in a little bit, but it's a fluid format where you can upload documents and then reference them in the plan, and it's like a library, so it's a living, it is a living document, but this is just a way to organize it. Anyway, you guys, so anything else there, or do you wanna, if I'm screen sharing, you can all comment on this section, or I don't know how you want to do it. I have a general comment, you know, about organization and order.
Is that how you spell squanica, or is there always the red squiggly under squanica? Because I know it's, sometimes it's used with an I instead of the A, and I don't know offhand what it is, but I, okay, I'll make a general statement, as you just made a note of, and that was that, okay, we were basically told by the chair of MPC that, you know, we did not need to be concerned with grammar, you know, capital letters, wrong words, or sentences that run on, that I guess somebody else is going to do that, obviously, before they submit it. So I stopped doing that. And trusting that they will, you know, catch all those things that should be changed before we have, you know, a professional master plan being sent to the state.
Yeah, that was my question too. I was wondering, like, is somebody gonna sort of pretty this whole thing up because it's, it was hard to read with some of the typos and things that were in it. I know Kim made a comment in that email that Beth sent us from, yeah, Kim to Beth and all of us, that I guess Monticic regional would be looking at it as well. So what, what is their function in this?
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
My understanding from Karen is that they're, they're only looking at, to make sure, as, as you were just saying, to follow the plan, they will be making sure that all the elements are there before it goes to the state. But they're not going to do the grammatical corrections, or spell check, or, you know, that kind of thing. That's not part of their contract, and Beth, please interject if I'm wrong.
I believe that, that's, well, they called it editing, so they're gonna edit the document, I believe.
It looks like, it looks like they provide services, though, but you have to pay for the services. They, they can provide master plan assistance.
Yeah.
I believe that's on their website.
This is part of the DLT grant.
Right, okay.
That has been signed between the town and MRPC, so...
But, but that said, I would recommend that if you see a typo or something grammatical, comment on it.
Okay.
Fix it or comment on it.
Yeah, do you know how to do that with the balloons?
No.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not good at that technical, you know, like Carol is really good at it.
Yeah.
I've seen all of her notes. She's terrific.
Only because I did it for a living when I worked.
Exactly. Exactly.
All right. Well, if you want to do it the old fashioned way, you could print it out. I know it's a lot of pages, though.
No, I'm not. That's why we have a full board here.
Lori, if you want me to, I can spend 10 minutes with you and show you how to do it. It's not hard at all. There's only like, you know, you just have to turn on in review to track changes, and then there's like in review, add comment. So it'll take all but 10 minutes to show you.
Okay, well, my, my plan was to just give you whatever notes I had, and then I'm sure that Carol will catch everything.
I'm not sure about that, but I'll try to write down your notes, Laura.
Yeah, I mean, we're a full board, I think, we're very active members now, so it doesn't have to be one person doing everything.
So there is just a description of what you want to do. You just hit that little box that looks like a bubble, and you can add your comments there. And so then your initials will be next to the comments, so it's kind of a
Is this within the attachment, or is it in the port hole?
I'm actually, this is the one that's in the SharePoint folder that you all have. So if you open that up in the SharePoint folder, you have a option to go ahead and just edit your comments right in there, and then you're going to want to save it. And then you can send, you know, keep, you can upload that copy right back into the folder. So I can, you know, we can help you do that too, if you want. Actually, I could probably do it as we go along, but I think that might get lengthy.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna talk last.
So, great. So yeah, there were, so Julie, there was a, there is a DTLTA grant. And I have the agreement, it's also in the SharePoint folders, if you wanted to read the scope of services. Primarily, it was maps, mapping, and then review of the the master plan, and I'm trying to remember the exact wording, but it's my understanding that they're gonna review it, you know, for, like Lori said, for kind of like compliance with what a typical master plan would, you know, have involved, have in it, incorporate. So we're standardized, you know, to some degree.
Yeah, I was just wondering, and I had asked you earlier today by email whether we could see if Pepperell used a technical writer or anything in the final stages of their report, or whether it was all done by member committee. Just because I think this could use something like that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and I wasn't able to get an answer for you on that, but I certainly can, because it was well written, yeah.
I can maybe fill that in a little bit, only because if you look at the 2001 plan and the acknowledgements, it says we owe a debt of gratitude to the heads, department heads who all, you know, participated, including Miss Luckman, the North Middlesex Regional School District, Dr. John Mullen, and the graduate students of the University of Massachusetts at Amherst Center for Economic Development, the Monticic Regional Planning Commission. They, they used a lot of other entities to gather that information for the 2001. And I think if you look at the other, the previous master plans, you'll find who was involved with, with them. Have we had somebody that just just went ahead and did the, the whole thing for us? I don't think that was ever done, but I could be wrong.
Okay, just a comment, we better pick up the pace if we're gonna go page by page, because we got 70 some more pages to go.
All right, which chart were you looking at again? Population density comparison, population trend, population estimate, growth rates, income comparison? Income comparison. Townsend has just one third the poverty rate. Is this it?
No, no, keep going for my comment.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, sorry.
Oh, I just had a question on this table.
This one, this one here?
Oh, wait a minute, no, not that one. Keep going.
Okay, this is table one. Table two, education, labor indicators, local communities. Table three, cost of living comparison in communities.
Yeah, that one, because I guess I'm not really following with these prices. Okay, the housing median I get, the cost for the mortgage, is that like what your monthly mortgage is? I said, the difference is between cost of mortgage and cost without mortgage.
Yeah, what does that mean? Costs with, cost without mortgage, housing median?
Probably that might be the taxes per, well, that doesn't, okay, so when you have a mortgage, with the other costs, it would be like your real estate taxes and your insurance that you pay each, I'm just surmising this, I'm from my
Okay.
So, all right, so a couple of comments. So right above table three is the uninsured persons.
Okay, yeah, also relevant.
And to address Carol's point, you might want to ask a comment. Please provide detail of cost without mortgage.
Okay.
I mean, it could be, as Lori said, the cost of the taxes per month, the cost of the insurance, and it could also include PMI. Oh, never mind, it's without mortgage, so it wouldn't be PMI.
So, so explain costs with mortgage?
Yep, without mortgage.
Without mortgage.
What does it include?
And we also ask him about what, what does it uninsured mean?
Okay, yeah. Oh, that's up further, yeah, okay.
I mean, that's the next column over, like four and a, four and a half percent uninsured for Townsend, I don't know.
Oh, right here.
On that, on that table.
And then also, there's a formatting issue with the, the city needs to be wider so that blackstone isn't cut off.
Blackstone.
See, yep, I see, they just...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
On my copy, it's fine, but they just need to move that, that over.
Okay.
Um, the uninsured, I'm just gonna guess, okay, what it, it might be is, I can't imagine anybody doing it, but because you're under the housing section now, but if you have, if, if you don't have a mortgage on your house, there's no mandate for you to have insurance. If you have a mortgage on your house, yes, you're mandated to have it because you won't get the financing without it, okay? And you can't even keep your mortgage without it. But people who do not have a mortgage, they can choose whether or not they want to have their property insured or not. And again, like I said, I'm only saying that because it's in the housing section, housing cost section. If it was someplace else, I wouldn't know what they were referring to, but in this section, to me, that's what that would mean.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
They're not forced to do it.
Insured, so that, okay, so that's your your assumption of uninsured.
They just need to clarify that, because why, why is that column, what does that mean?
Okay. So this is good enough. What does uninsured mean in the table?
Yeah. I guess that would mean the same thing in, in every table, because the next one's your cost of living table, and then you've got the uninsured again.
Yeah, right down there, okay.
And they just need to add dollar signs on this table, where they forgot the dollar sign, so I'm assuming those are dollars.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I mean, they need to be consistent.
Okay, where is it missing? Dollar signs down here?
Table four.
Table four, yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, just for information, Michael is out of town. He's at a wedding, so he can't join us.
Okay.
Is it the formatting again? Persons per households, is that person per household, or persons per households? Table five.
It should be plural.
Persons per households, okay.
I would think.
Yeah, like it is, it's correct?
Yeah.
Okay. There are some communities. All right, I'm just gonna keep scrolling until somebody has a comment.
What is the one year residence?
Yep. What is it?
One year resident, 92.7% of what?
A person per household, comparison communities, state and then USA. Townsend, one year residence, 92.7%. Yeah, that does, I don't understand.
Yeah.
No, I don't understand what that means. Yeah, that needs clarification. So table five needs clarification, basically, okay.
What's the difference between five and six?
Five and six.
Oh, the table five is the, what the, at the beginning there, that the towns that they're doing a comparison of, and then they, and then the second table is the local communities. They kind of did that book. So at the very beginning, they tell you that these are the comparable
Oh.
towns that they use throughout the thing, and then they also have tables.
Okay, they're not the same towns, okay, I see.
You'll see those comparable communities throughout the whole document, and they, they talk about it up at the very beginning.
Okay, sorry.
On table five, households should be singular. It's persons per household, so one household has how many people? Because they did it in table six, but they didn't do it in five, they got an extra S.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Do you want me to just continue going down?
Yeah.
All right. Table seven, population comparison communities.
Again, a general comment, you know, there's some formatting issues, like if you look at the table headers in table eight, and also in table seven, you know, you have population, and it's not wide enough.
Yeah, they just gotta move the lines.
Okay.
So there's a lot of formatting issues throughout the document.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question about this highlighted area about the town of Townsend. It talks about respondents, respondents, but respondents of what? I didn't see anything in here that, that kind of described what this is, and what people were responding to, and how old that, whatever.
So there's a survey, right, that they did?
But they don't explain with the survey, or how old it is. How old the survey, is it like recent, or is it like 20 years old? I mean...
Right.
There was no like paragraph that said, we did some kind of survey in such and such a year, and we're gonna, you know, and then do something. They just throw this in there without really...
Yeah, and it probably would be good, and I didn't know what Pepperell did, but it might be good to throw an appendix in there with the actual survey.
Absolutely. Usually, there's an executive summary before a report like this, and it goes through all of the things that were done so that the reader knows what to expect. That, that's what's hard about this, is it's, it's the order of things.
Yeah, I think there might have been, there was a note in the email from the master plan chair, Kim, about that highlighted area. Where is it? Okay, there are a few spots in the document, as it stands, where survey information will be incorporated, highlighted in yellow. So that's all from the initial survey that was done. Ow, sorry, mosquito bite.
So if this is being presented as a final draft, it doesn't seem to be in that condition, though. If, if they still have to add major sections to it, and even that email said there's another section on open space and recreation to come, so...
Yeah.
Who's writing that? Is that the people they hired? Because Veronica Kell and I are the only people on the open space and recreation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
She, her and I are the only ones, so...
I don't know who's writing that. Maybe someone from the master plan committee who might want to speak to that. If they're on the call. Otherwise, if you guys want to continue, you can continue going through the document, or you can wait for another version. I mean, that's perfectly acceptable, too.
I think if we can do it efficiently, I think we should just go through the whole document so we can provide them feedback. I think if we can do it efficiently, I think we should just go through the whole document so we can provide them feedback.
Okay. All right, so the survey right here, I'm just gonna make a note. What survey?
You know, and Julie, I say the stuff in yellow is something that is like notes that this is what we need to add sometime later, so this is work in progress.
But, yeah, but to Carol's point, it doesn't even discuss really the survey.
Yep, I agree 100% with that. And they should have the survey in the appendancy so you can read the question.
Okay.
Administration. Okay, on the bottom here, under government of Townsend, the last sentence, oversight is through a three member board of select, and with it, is it supposed to be a town administrator?
Okay.
Day to day administrative duties, or is that, I wasn't sure, that instead of administration, should that say administrator?
Oh, I'm sorry. So where are we here? Oh, government of Townsend?
Look at the last sentence, we're excited.
Town administrator.
It should be town administrator, and then, I mean, the sentences needs to be rewritten.
Okay.
It should probably be oversight is through a three member board of select, maybe supported by a town administrator, having day to day administrative duties or something.
Okay. Town administrator. Da da da. Okay, I get the idea. It's not worded right. Okay.
Just the same comment on the yellow as before.
Yep. Okay. So any of the text.
Sorry.
Any texts? I'm just scrolling slowly, so stop me.
Not sure we need the coverage that's in this, but it's pretty, pretty comprehensive of our history. But this is supposed to be sort of a dynamic, forward looking document, so I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good comment. Yeah.
Oh, I guess I have one question. Did Mr. Stone personally provide the funds, or did Sterilite provide the funds?
For what? Where are you?
Oh, for the senior center?
Yeah.
Uh, it's the
I was talking to somebody.
I'm trying to remember the LLC.
That was Mr. Stone.
Well, on all the paperwork, I think it was called like, yeah, Senior Center Expansion LLC, so I think the donor, he was gonna be, you know, probably wanted that to be the case.
Okay.
So, is that in here, or I didn't catch it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is? Oh, I didn't see that. Can I, yeah.
Yeah, keep on going. It's quite a ways down. This is, it was interesting, but took forever.
Yeah, okay. Booming agriculture, end of the century Sterilite?
Yeah.
No, I think it's later they talk.
Down further.
Yeah.
Down further.
Oh, okay, so this is correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody see it?
Right there, stop.
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if he personally had done it, or if Sterilite, the corporation, had done it.
It's written as he's in his corporate capacity there as chairman of Sterilite, so I think that's, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's correct. And when I think of Sterilite, I think of Mr. Stone, and how generous he's been to this town. So, but yeah, he was the spokesperson for.
So the expansion isn't mentioned, would that not be mentioned here, or I don't know?
It should, because they've started it.
Yeah, it should be mentioned.
All right, I'll just put a comment in there then. The senior center expansion. Okay. Now, wasn't there also another fire station, the central fire station, but isn't there a West Townsend?
Yeah, it's in the next sentence. Yeah, there it is. It's in 2015, the annual meeting, blah, blah, blah.
Oh, yeah, and then below the West Townsend Fire Station opening.
Perfect. All right. Map one is community facilities. It's really hard to see on the screen, so I don't know if anyone had any notes on that. Community assets.
So I guess on community assets, the only comment I had, it was the comment on currently buildings are in good repair. I would say that the old library is not in good shape, and what is the building, is it the old rec center? What's the building that is right there by the library, the small building?
The rec center, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't say that it's in good repair.
Okay.
Neither have been, well, the rec center has had worked on to it, but more on a volunteer basis, as far as, you know, emptying and paint, but the Hart Library, oh my God. If we can, you know, we're gonna try, hopefully, we can go after a grant to get that one done.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Where do they, okay, the, all the highlighted, okay, originally, I thought that all the highlighted were part of the survey. But I don't see how this particular community assets would be part of the survey, so knowing that, where did they get the percentages? How did they?
Question 14.
Community assets.
Yeah. Question 14, which we don't know what it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe they rated them on a scale.
It does say respondents.
Yeah, well, it is part of the survey, because we said they're in good shape. I guess it's relative.
Really not know the buildings.
Yeah. They have a walkthrough or something?
That one is, so that's, okay, historic.
All right, so on the last paragraph, I mean, the first paragraph there, the last sentence, this section shows the town supports strong with preserving its history, and is willing to support efforts to expand, preserve, it seems a bit awkward to me to put that there.
Support strong.
That was one of the comments, why I made the comment I made before. My understanding is that the historical society wrote this. So it needs some, this one really needs to be checked for spell check. Are you using the right words? Did the sentence mean what you wanted to say, that kind of thing? This has got to be, it wasn't a writer, writer.
You know, it needs an apostrophe on it because it's possessive. Of course, this is an engineer speaking in grammar, so I should be quiet.
What kind of engineer are you, again?
I'm an electrical engineer.
Oh. Country Estates may need your assistance.
Oh. I'm a computer designer, not you know.
But you. Okay, whatever.
Okay. A lot more history here, okay.
And I, you know, yeah, there's like a typo. Whoops, go down further. Stop, let's see. All right, where it says in the second paragraph, the best known, the community ass, this community asset, it should be singular as opposed to plural.
Asset, yep.
I had a question just up above, where they talk about, we, I guess we currently have a historic district commission, but they say we should have a, what is it? A historical commission, oh, develop a historical commission. So what's the difference between a historic district commission, which Townsend already has, versus the development of a historical commission? What would be the difference between? It's up, it's above right here.
Yeah, okay.
Has a historic district commission, but it does not have a historical commission. The development would create a body that would be responsible for, blah, 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 but isn't that what the historic district commission does?
So do we have, like, if I live in a historic house, and I want to change my outside shutters, does anyone get involved in that? Because that's what I thought historical commissions did. You had to run things through them.
The historic district commission does, in the historic commission zones, yeah, if you're in those districts, yeah.
So then I have the same question. What, what would the?
What would be the difference, and why do we, if we have a historical commission, would we historic district, I mean, why would we have two commissions that probably overlap?
Yeah, explain what they're getting at.
The society, which is, my understanding is that the same people, or some of the same people from the society, which is a nonprofit, are on the historic, historical commission. Just, I don't know.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there is no.
I just question the need for two different, a district, historic district commission, which we have, and creating a new historical commission.
So maybe the thing to do, Beth, is just put a comment down. Can you explain the differences between the two and why we need to?
Okay, yeah, got that.
All right, and the other thing that I have here is they're talking about a Community Preservation Act, or they're talking about the Community Preservation Act?
Yeah.
Nowhere in this document does it say that the Community Preservation Act requires the town, requires the town citizens to have a local tax placed on them that is then, you know, enables a town for state funds, but it, they, it should be stated that somewhere, what, you know, that there is a tax, and this is how much it is, and, you know, you know, if they want to sell it, this is the benefits, you know, the town matches it 100 to 1 or whatever, I don't know.
Okay, so discuss the criteria and discuss the benefits.
Well, I think, yeah, I think that it's, it's, it's not very, you need to be upfront about it, stating that if you're gonna pass it, there is a cost to the community.
It was all your property taxes.
Yeah.
Because when I lived in Westford, Westford happened.
So, but it's, but Carol, then you, if you had it in Westford, you can explain, was it something that you paid every single year, or was it a tax put on the sale of property?
No, it was on my property tax.
Every year from all the community?
Every year, yeah, it was, once it was passed, once the town passed the CPA, it showed up on your property tax bill every year.
Okay, so then these.
Once it's passed, it's forever.
Yeah, but, so it's come before Townsend before, and it failed, okay? The, the motion was made, it was on a warrant in the past, a few years ago, and it failed. But one of the reasons why it failed, and it, one of the reasons why it's failed in many communities, because it was an additional tax on sale of property. Now, it's
I don't know if that's true, but I do know that I was paying an additional fee on my property tax.
Every year.
I would be, I would probably vote it down, because I pay enough property taxes without adding more to property tax.
Right, but this needs to be, and that was one of my comments in one of my papers that I sent, was that if you're gonna, if our master plan is gonna be a proponent of this, then you need to explain what it means to all, all the people reading this master plan, because I don't know that we can, you can't be, it's hard, because you can't be for affordable housing on the one hand, and then you add a tax to homeownership. So.
A little more detail, basically, about the program.
So, from the website on the CPA, "Community preservation monies are raised locally through the imposition of a surcharge of not more than 3% of the tax levy against real property, and municipalities must adopt the CPA by ballot referendum."
Correct.
Yep.
And like Carol said, it doesn't get unvoted. It's there, right? Yeah.
Right. It was, it was not voted in Townsend, but you notice what she said. It's, it's an assessment on the transfer of property. Now, in the case of Westford, Carol is saying that it was on, once it passed, there was a tax, additional tax on everyone's property in the town.
I, I paid a CPA tax, I don't.
That should be clarified, and it should be explained just what that means.
Where did you see that, Lori, that it's an assessment on, it's a tax on?
Well.
I think it was Julie that.
Well, I read that differently. I read, monies are raised locally through the imposition of a surcharge of not more than 3% of the tax levy against real property. A surcharge.
So they would do it on every property?
It's unilateral, yeah, it's unilateral.
You can't say, no, I don't want to pay it. Once it's, you pay it.
Yeah.
And we need another board for it, too.
Yeah, oh, yeah, administrative is big. It's a very big part of the town process. Okay, so I'm just gonna scroll down. The comments I have are requiring.
Find out, too, in reference to that, when they're bringing it up on the plan, since this is their plan, and this is what they want to bring forward, how, how many other communities in the state have that CPA?
Okay.
Oh, I think I can answer that. 187 communities.
Thank you, Julie.
100 and what?
Well, it's, that's 53% of the Commonwealth cities and towns.
Okay.
But what, it would also be good to compare it to like to our town. So how many of, how many ci, well, not cities probably, but how many towns under 10,000 people actually have passed this tax?
Or more precisely, does Pepper, has Pepperell passed it? Has Ashby passed it? Has Unibird passed it?
Grotten has, yeah.
Yeah, Grotten, that makes sense, though.
But not Pepperell. How many surrounding towns and towns under 10K population? Mike might already have this.
But you could look at the comparison communities that they've used, which is what, Blackstone, Sutton, Southwick.
Yeah, so that, that's a good point. So how many of the comparison towns have adopted CPA? Okay. All right. Historic district, there you go. Are you in there, Julie? Oh, there's the historic district.
Oh, no, I'm not in there.
Okay.
Can we, oh, Beth, stop, scroll back up, just the last sentence, wait, no, go back down, right there. The last sentence before we get to map three.
Okay.
It says the Coop Ridge and is adjacent to the Reed Homestead.
Okay, the.
There's the last sentence.
The Coop Ridge is adjacent to the Reed, yeah.
There's something screwy there.
Sentence structure. Excellent. There's district two. Beautiful. Grist Mill.
Um, what is home in capital letters?
Oh, okay.
Home at the Coop Ridge?
Previously mentioned, home at the Coop Ridge next to the Reed Homestead.
Is that the name of?
Yeah, I had a question on that, too. What, what is that?
What is that?
Yeah. Okay. Did I miss a screen? All right. All right. Survey question six. There's District Three. They're talking about the New Indian Hill.
Similar to Tanglewood, huh?
That's pretty big, yeah. They're talking about an international draw, so that's pretty nice.
The paragraph that starts one of the four central goals of the Community Preservation Act, so they, this is something they do throughout the document. Once you use the acronym, you spell it out the first time, then you use the acronym, then you use the acronym going forward through the document. So there's a, there's a bunch of those, that's one example.
Okay, yeah.
There's others that hopefully they'll catch on there.
Yep.
Rerates.
Is. For consistency.
Yeah, there's a whole, the whole document needs to be reviewed for consistency.
Okay, so many other instances of this, okay. Okay. One example of this is the annual walk the Thoreau Society makes along what is now the rail trail to Retrace, okay. Okay, those are the three recommendations. Economic development, I just keep strong, scrolling through until you guys stop me, okay?
Okay, where was it? Beth, where are you with the chapter? Okay.
So I have a, so in the sentence, the paragraph that starts in a study.
Okay.
That first sentence has a lot of problems. It should, conclusion should be plural for conclusions, word draw, probably should be, were drawn.
Okay.
Plus, I had a question on that. They're citing a 2006 um, study. We don't have anything more current.
Okay.
This is a long ways back.
Yeah, okay, so dated, very dated data, basically.
And, you know, and, and, yeah.
That's the same question for all the data that they use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The data they cite is quite old.
Yep.
All of it isn't today, when it's 14, 15 years old.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, anything that's more than 10 years is dated.
Yeah, anything.
And even, even 10 years is a long time ago.
Excuse me, Lance?
Yes, Andrea.
The, a lot of the data, that was sort of my big problems with this. But they had to use the census. And the census comes out only every 10 years.
Wow.
So it, it'll be out in September, but it's not now.
But that's 2010 was the last census.
Right. So that makes some of this, this stuff 10 years old. And this was what was used by the, the company that we hired to do this. But you see these kind of statistics all the time on the, um, the state websites, because they keep referring back to that census.
Yeah, but I would say stuff that's 2004, 2006.
Oh, I'm not, yes. Again, th, th, those were things that we got from that company that did the things. And I think pointing that out is, is a very good point.
I would just probably leave it out.
Hmm.
Um, I have a comment on, and I just saw, but I can't find it now again, where it says, um, like, state owned the 31%. Can you go back to that? I think it was above.
Sure, one, just one more comment I had.
Okay.
I wanted to, to add the, the the fact that, that, I guess a general comment about the older, the older data.
I'm trying to find that.
Looking for more?
Um, okay.
Something that said about the 31% of state land.
Okay, so I'm in this chapter still?
Yeah, it was above it, I think. I, I just.
Wait, stop, stop. Townsend also benefits from a large amount of state-owned land with over 31.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, yeah, maybe that would be okay. I know that I've, I've always known, and this has not changed, but increased, since I moved here, we were 33%, one third of this town was state-owned or town-owned property since, and that was 45 years ago. So since that time, we've created more open space, which is the same thing, stuff that conservation, there's been more land put into conservation, um, under some degree of protection. Yeah, maybe.
They're saying it's 48% right now.
Land area in Townsend is under some degree of protection. Yeah, that's, that's very possible. Yeah, we're certainly not dense. We're not densely populated at all. More open space than most places.
That's significant, yeah.
It's very significant. That is a lot. That is really a lot.
Okay. And there are no sources cited for this, these figures either. Or am I missing them?
I didn't see any.
I didn't see any.
Okay, just gonna keep rolling through.
Where they start talking about that 2012 study, oh, no, you, you were on it. Go back up.
Okay.
I'm sorry, down.
That's right there.
Yeah, right there. Strategies for Economic Improvement in Appalachia's Distressed Counties, which examined rural, I wasn't sure what that, the, like, why did they pull that? Appalachia's distressed county, like, what does that have to do with?
Yeah.
It just didn't.
So there, there may be, Julie's comment might be relevance. How is this relevant to Townsend?
Yep, I'll put that. How is this relevant to Townsend? Got it. Okay.
So the paragraph that starts while Townsend, let's say about halfway down, it says, "Over the past several years, Springdale has undergone changes and recently enlarged its footprint to offer a variety of", it says, "locally sourced items and offers brought", they need to clean that sentence up.
Okay.
I don't even know what that says.
When you finish with that, Beth, I just saw a typo just up above.
Uh-oh, mosquitoes. I'm gonna need that bug spray.
I think I can throw it through the screen.
I might have to enlist my son. Oh, you are? Okay. Can you grab me some bug spray? It's in the mudroom. Thanks, Eric. Okay. Sentence structure there on Springdale, and you had Carol.
Paragraph up above, where it says, "Another resource, another resources", go up one more, right here, "another" should, it's another resource instead of resources. Just take the, off of resources.
I'm not seeing that.
It's like recreation.
Oh, yes, okay. Should be singular.
Yes.
Awesome. All right. Sort of formatting. Thanks, you saved me. Sorry, I didn't get to visit with you guys. It's good to see you. We'll see you Wednesday. All right. All right. Thanks. All right. All right, I may have to make a move because if they're really swarming.
Just let the chemicals do their job. Looks like Beth is moving. She's not as tough as Julie.
I also have a fan blowing at me.
Oh, you may have better chemicals, too.
Oh, now it's getting chilly with the fan.
All right, can anyone hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, great. I'm gonna go back and get my mouse and my power cord. I'll be right back. There we go. Perfect. There we go. So we have the maps of the music Indian Hill, apparently, and the economic impact that we hope to see.
All right, so a general comment, and it's, it applies a lot, especially after this, is there's format font issues. So in other words, you know, the, the fonts aren't consistent throughout the whole document.
Yeah, just take an example here.
Yeah.
Font.
You know, and then the paragraph below that one is a smaller font.
Yeah, that's just throughout document. Hello. I'm in a meeting.
Tell Terry to go away.
He said, tell Terry to go away. Lance, say hi. Bring me my dinner. Okay, throughout the document. Yep, got that.
Okay, and then my other comment, which is just a personal comment for me, but I think enabling Airbnbs requires quite a bit of thought. I don't know if you, anyone has recently read about the issues they have with them in North Conway? I mean, you don't want your next-door neighbor's house turning into a, you know, with different people there every three days or every week.
That happens on my street.
Oh.
I mean, I just, I just know that you, you don't go into enabling Airbnbs without, you know, without some thought and potential regulations. I mean.
Yeah, there's a lot to it. I agree, Lance.
I agree with that.
And they're all getting caught with taxes now, too.
Yeah.
Okay. I made a comment there.
So Beth, the sentence that starts, "A destination such as Stone Cow Brewery in Berry",
Okay.
that, there's the red squiggly line, because I think they, it's, I think they're trying to say, "a lot of which would benefit",
Yeah.
"allow".
Yeah, a lot. Got it. And then there's a color change here, but.
Well, is that just highlighting a word that shouldn't be there? Because it doesn't look like a word, or?
This one?
Maybe it's "all of", not "allow of".
Yeah, so I made a comment down here and let them change that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I should actually put a question mark, because.
What is, what did you mean?
Yeah.
I just.
Travelocity, in 2016, Travelocity established a beer tour. What?
I just, can you just go back what up here where it says, the Mass Plan Committee? Where it says, under, after your "allow", after your.
My "allow", okay.
The suggestions were not just generated from the Mass Plan Committee, but backed by the survey, but they don't say what survey.
Okay.
And economic data.
And backed by the survey, but they should, like we talked about before, say something about the survey or include the survey in an appendix.
Okay.
So if you see that, see that number 51,584?
Yep.
Right above that are the letters BA, and I'm assuming they mean the Brewers Brewery Association, but they never use the acronym, so.
Yeah.
They either use the acronym or just spell it out.
Okay, yep. Consistency. Okay.
So why did they, um, why did they, oh, they said that this was backed by the survey? That's why it's included in here?
Apparently, yeah.
One of the things I was told when I was showing the house, or the town, when I was gonna buy here, and so we're talking about the mid-1970s, one of the things I was told was that Townsend had the purest water around, and that Budweiser wanted to come into town, and the town wouldn't allow them here. So that's why they ended up somewhere in New Hampshire.
Paramack, yeah.
But that's how good our water was.
Was.
Okay. Changes in employment.
So that.
Oh, sorry, does, is that figure discussed in the text? Figure one?
Good question.
I see figure one, but I don't see it discussed in the text. Did anybody see that?
Yep.
Yeah, that should be a comment.
Okay. What happened to my comment pops? Not sure what I did here now.
You've exceeded the number of comments allowed.
I think I have. I'm nervous about that. I was doing fine. Okay, it shows up when I do that, but maybe it's something that has to do with the table. So I'll put it here. Yeah. There. To figure one. Okay.
That first paragraph, "the town should hire," and then the first sentence, there's a typo. "In addition, the town needs to collaborate with the small business community and nonprofits to collaborate," used twice, but that's on, then they say "on project."
Okay.
I would.
It's a whole sentence.
Rework that sentence.
Yeah. Typos. And sentence structure. Repetitive words.
All right, so I guess I have a, let me know when you're ready, Beth.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have, I guess, some significant heartburn with these recommendations. And the major reason is, is that what I would like to see is, you know, some facts, that if we look at the Townsend's revenue stream from our businesses, so in other words, exclude Sterilite, exclude Deluxe. If we look at all of our businesses, how much tax revenue does that generate for the town? And then, if we're going to hire a town planner, I don't know how much a town planner costs, but you know, do we even have a chance of getting any return on investment? You know, I doubt that a town planner is going to be able to, I mean, we're not gonna cover a salary probably with the existing tax revenue that we get from our small businesses. So I think that there needs to be a little bit more effort put into why it is economically makes sense to hire a town planner. And why we couldn't do this with a dedicated committee focused on this or something, of volunteers.
Plans?
Yes.
Not to disagree with you, because I don't necessarily, but I think some of these points were put in as points we could go for grants for. We could go for a grant to get a planner, for example.
Okay, then I would recommend then that we put that in this section, that we should pursue a grant that would enable hiring of a town planner.
Is there a grant out there that allows for a planner to be hired for, in perpetuity?
A consultant?
From time to time, there's-
Forever?
There for, probably for everything.
For-
Maybe there's a consultant.
Yeah, but a consulting planner, like we use peer review consultants, but I've never, I mean, maybe I'm wrong. I didn't know there was a-
No, I'm not saying there necessarily is now. But a lot of times when you apply for something, a grant to do, and then you give your definitions, they'll release the money to do things that you want to do with it. That you need to do with it, but it falls within their parameters. And maybe a point like that, I'm not saying it doesn't need to be clarified or any of that.
I agree with you, Andrea. If, if we could get a planner or an economic development consultant or something that can be covered with grant money, I would be all forward for it. But if we're going to have to pay for it out of our tax revenue, I question the return on investment.
Well, you have to remember, the whole point of this is to go for grants. It's not legally impinging on anybody to follow these recommendations.
Yes, but it's, it's recommendations that the citizens or the master plan, you know, and the citizens approve it. You know, I would, I would, I would focus this more on getting a grant as opposed to all, you know, a recommendation to hire without a grant.
Yes.
Okay, we agree.
Understand.
And-
Written in there like that? Beth, can you make that note?
Yeah, I tried to keep, keep up with it, but, um, you know, basically what Chairman McNally said was, in, with regards to the recommendation, what are the facts for these recommendations? And what kind of effort has put into why these recommendations make sense economically? Why does it make sense to hire a planner? And Andrea mentioned that if these are written, these recommendations are written in the mindset of pursuing grants, not necessarily to fund a position, but, you know, maybe to, you know, sort of write, you know, what the town needs. If you get the grant, I don't know if I'm saying that right, but ultimately clarify this to make an argument and focus more on the getting grant part than the recommendation of filling a new position.
I think that I'd get it across to the committee what you mean.
Thanks.
Yeah, and, and you know, and I think it would probably be good to recommend putting in a Townsend Economic Development Committee.
Yeah, that would be really nice.
You know, and, and they're the ones that can sort of kick this off, or, you know, because there needs to be someone here to run with this.
And, and to that point, to one of the statements you made, Lance, we don't have enough businesses or commercial or industrial to have a different tax rate for them. Like, if we, because some cities and towns either have a higher or a lower tax rate for their businesses. And in our case, for many years, in fact, almost every year, that it goes before the selectmen, there is not enough evidence, as you stated, to substantiate that we would have that, it would lower the tax rate for residential homes. If we had more businesses, they could, they could. That might be a possibility.
Well, let me ask a very embarrassing question. How are our businesses taxed?
Most of them are personal property. So in other words, if you're in a business in Townsend, you have to submit every year a report to the assessor's office. And then your equipment is depreciated, or whatever, if you have vehicles. I mean, it's more for the, like Steril-
All right, so I, so I, so I'm taxed on my, my property value, probably my inventory, my assets, da-da, da-da, da-da?
Yeah, as a business.
Okay. And do you have any idea of currently in Townsend, what, how much of our tax revenue is business versus residential?
I don't, but I would ask Vicki. I would ask our assessor.
Andrea, do you have that? Do you have any idea on that?
No.
Okay.
I don't. I know that they, they end up paying more than a comparable property, because it's worth more.
Yeah.
But it's all at the same rate.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and then my other comment with, you know, is with the, the town should look at advertising for reasons to visit in Townsend. So as part of economic development, I think that there should be a mechanism where local businesses actually, you know, I have to, you know, I have to pay to market my own company. I'm not looking for someone else to, but I think that there needs to be a mechanism through maybe a small business association or what have you to advertise, to bring the folks that go visit Indian Hill here to have lunch. I think that, that's something that should be borne by more than just the town residents.
Okay.
So, to that point, because I was a member of the TBA for, since its inception, there were different, different boards, obviously, and through the years, we did have various avenues of promoting the businesses in town. And we'd have a newsletter, or we'd run a full-page ad or something like that. And those businesses would contribute to the cost of that advertising or promotion, you know, whatever it was.
Yeah.
It's not done, it hasn't been done, oh my God, for probably 10 years now, or more, that I know of. I can't remember how long I've been off their board. But, you know, we used to do various things to at least have the businesses all be business-friendly. We didn't necessarily bring in other businesses. I mean, I think this new board, like the last five years or whatever, they've brought, they've allowed businesses from other communities to join if they want to join, but they also haven't been active for the last two years, anyway. So it's hard to say. Everything is an effort, because those people that serve on the board are volunteers, just like all of us here for the town. So, you know, if we got, if we had more volunteers in town, then, you know, we'd be in a lot better shape.
More than aging population, we should have more people with spare time.
You would think. I think there's a typo in the paragraph about the town needs businesses. It says the zooming section. I think it's the zoning section.
Yeah.
Zooming is fun, too.
That's what we all have on our mind lately, is zooming. With the Z is zooming. Yeah, zoning. Good catch, Julie.
I know, we both, most of us would just glaze over that. Yeah, yeah, that's zoom.
Well, I thought we had a zooming district. I got excited for a minute.
Okay. Current space and devise a plan that will encourage businesses, business.
I really don't get that statement.
In bold?
Yeah, I don't, I don't get it, because how it's, it's- Well, we haven't talked about open space either, so, at this point.
Yeah.
Because there's no section on that.
Right. That's, that's forthcoming. That's gotta be added.
Devise a plan that will encourage business use, uses consistent with the rural character and needs of the town. How does that, what does that have to do with open space? Yeah, exactly. That was my question.
Yeah. And it's very general. It, it, it just doesn't-
Yeah, it's general, but I mean, what does it mean?
Exactly, yeah. I mean-
I'd highlight the whole paragraph.
Right. I mean, I, if you look in the other master plan, you get a list of, you know, business uses that citizens want to see. I don't know if that's later in the document or not, but I'm very familiar with Pepperell, and you asked the community, what do you want to see for businesses? I'm sure that's in the survey, but, yeah. I think I already have a comment here. May not.
Yeah, I don't, and that, the whole sentence, I agree with Julie, the whole sentence that's after that, I'm not, I'm not understanding how that's gonna be accomplished, or what is it gonna be, what's gonna be accomplished? By the stores would include the economic development director, business community, landowners, and neighbors to construct a plan. How does that relate to open space? And the use of rural character. Um, you know, we're 20 minutes off 495. We're about the same amount off route two in, in any given direction. And people have to want to go to a, like, I mean, the draw here, obviously, and I, I, sorry if I didn't catch it somewhere, is the antiques. The antiques have always been a draw here. You, well, not during COVID necessarily, but they, that's what Townsend was known for, for a lot of years. We used to have an antique shop in the Conant House. That's not there anymore.
Laurie?
Yep.
We, antiques were big, and we still have some very good antique businesses in town. However, there used to be a whole string, and dealers would go from one to one to one up into New Hampshire. The majority of them have now disappeared, as Conant House and other ones. And the antique business is hard-pressed now. It's not like it used to be, not at all, because there's not the line of support.
I agree, Andrea. That's, that's right. And that's sad, because that was one of the draws of Townsend.
Absolutely.
Were the antique shops. And now with the settle shop, well, the settle shop is still there, and now there's a new Artesian something market I have, which I've not gone, gone into, but his gift shop is, is not there.
So for the highlight, can I write, or should I write elaborate and explain the meaning of the statement and the relevance to open space?
Yeah.
So, transportation, there are no recommendations, really, or is that the recommendation for the economic development chapter?
I see it as a recommendation, because it's under the, sort of like-
Okay.
It's under the economic development recommendations section.
So there's only one general recommendation? I mean-
Well, no, I, I see that there's a recommendation to hire a town planner. There's a recommendation to enact the Community Preservation Act. There's a recommendation that the town should invest in advertising to promote tourism.
Okay, there we go. So I guess maybe the title of recommendations here might be a good thing to put in. A subtitle.
Where the formatting comes into play, because in other sections, they will have, like, under transportation, circulation recommendations, they have a bullet list.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for in economic development.
They need to be, this is another thing where they need to be consistent throughout the document. They're, they're all over the place. So places you have a bullet list of recommendations, and then- So places you have a bullet list of recommendations and then
other places, it's like a paragraph. I don't see anything in comments, question?
Oh, I probably missed one up ahead. Where up more? The paragraph to start Townsend's residents also use the MBTA. I just wondered why they left air out.
I agree. Air should be in there because people do use the train and air. They don't just go to Pittsburgh.
And in fact, if you live in Townsend Harbor, air is closer than Pittsburgh.
Yeah, so air, MBTA, should I write?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why do they have, they mention Shirley but not air?
Two closest stations to Townsend are Pittsburgh and Shirley. Yeah, the Pittsburgh station is eight miles from Townsend Center. The Shirley station is 10 miles from Center.
The air downtown is a little bit further, but I know a lot of people use it.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if you, if you live in the harbor.
Right. One last stop into Boston. Okay, so I put a note there, the air MBTA station.
I think they have a little more parking at the air station than they do in the Shirley one.
For commuter. Okay. So that's on this rail trail.
Do we pass the farm stands?
Thanks for farm stands here in economic development.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so I don't know if you caught the I mean, I wasn't gonna, but you said we should tell them if we find something. Did you catch the misspell on Littleton?
Right up here or somewhere in
Oh, right.
Littleton. That one. Yeah. I'll just do that. Just want to quick reference rail trail.
So what are they saying about the economic downturn? Between seven, 2007, 2010? It could last longer than that.
Traffic's been increasing. Traffic volume index and rate group figure. Is that, what figure is that? Does anybody know? It says the traffic volume index and rate group figure, but it doesn't have a number. Or am I missing that?
Is that the figure there, the map and traffic count location? It should say figure two if that's what they're calling it.
And rate group figure. Nope, that's traffic volume index and growth rate. Or maybe that's kind of what they're talking about. Traffic volume index and rate group figure. Growth rate. Okay, so that's not consistent. I don't know what this is.
It doesn't say map nine traffic count location. Is that the title of it?
Map nine traffic count locations. Yeah, I guess so. That, that would be.
Why that?
Figure. Inconsistent. Naming.
You gonna get an explanation of that? Okay.
Of the map nine, the map nine title?
I was thinking of that rate group figure, but.
Yeah, I got that too. I just put a little comment. The name here is inconsistent with the name in figure two. If that's what this is, I don't know. Straighten that out. So I just said naming and figure number between these two. This is old data here. And I would think that automobile crash data you know, would be available for something more
In Townsend, yeah.
2016, yeah. I don't know, though. I'm sure that, would MRPC look at those figures when they review? I don't know. I mean, they're the ones that have a lot of that data as well. I, I do think that that would be caught, you know, commented on during MRPC's review because I think I remember Karen Chapman saying, you know, if there's not a lot of data updates, this should go quickly. So I think they are intending on hopefully checking the sources. I don't know. I would hope, but I don't know.
Can that just be a side comment as well? And they can ask Karen?
You see where there's something missing down in the last paragraph?
The start of the sentence?
Yeah, it says such shows the location, but
Shows the locations.
Shows the location. Something's missing.
Yeah. Sentence structure. And reference. We don't know what the reference is.
I'm not sure what that whole paragraph's trying to say. It says about this been a noteworthy cluster of accidents in Townsend Center, although it lacks a current elsewhere, and the map doesn't make clear that pedestrian and bicycle safety is a significant issue. I was confused by this whole paragraph.
Yeah, I think the whole paragraph. Basically, it's a confusing paragraph. Please clarify and document your statements. That work?
Yes.
Complete streets.
On the complete streets, downward says has been driven. It should be say has been driven by both the safety issues discussed above and by the health. Right. Right here, has been driven by both the safety issues.
So this, just rewrite this.
Well, yeah, because it's like this refocusing has been driven, it should say, by both the safety issues discussed above and by it just by in front of both.
This I found in this sentence here. Mass DOT calls this new vision, complete streets, according to.
According to, yeah, that's confusing too. It's like they're repeating themselves.
Yeah, I think that, that writing, yeah, the writing is not.
And maybe that should be at the beginning of the sentence. I mean, at this beginning of the paragraph.
Well, I think introducing the
Somewhere up here, I don't know.
I think rewriting from here over, just, just for a thought. This is, what does this mean? Mass DOT is not only pushing design. How does mass DOT push a design? I don't get it. The writing, no. I don't know. I just can't. I can't read a document that says DOT is pushing a design. Is that me or? Doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't understand that. Any questions?
Oh, there's a question. I have a typo back up a little bit. Word up. Stop. Rate words, the right, add bike lanes on Wallace Hill Road. Looks like there's a comma that needs to be deleted and a space inserted.
Okay. Just gonna do that right there.
And I would like to, if possible, like conclude this meeting as close to 8:30 as possible, since I have to be up at 5:00 tomorrow morning.
So can we meet, can we do another work session? Because there's some meaty chapters coming up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I'm concerned about, especially with zoning.
And housing.
Yeah.
So.
Let's see. Can we do another 15 minutes?
Yeah.
Can we? How quickly can we meet again so that we can get something? Well, obviously, Beth, you can send everything along to the master plan committee from tonight. And because we want well, I guess I have a wrap up thought, if you'll allow me, Lance.
Go ahead.
So we've, we've got, been through a lot for almost three years now in reference to this plan. And a lot of my questions to Beth, and I think the reason why she sent the outline of guidance for master plans from Pepperell and the other town is that we need to look at this every year. And I, I know now that we need to reappoint the current committee, and it's not just until you know, September, because it has to be until the next election. So I think that we move forward with hopefully getting as much done as we can with this and get and accept the plan as soon as possible to pass along to MRPC to review. And then hopefully we can get this to the state and approved so that it can be voted at the annual special meeting. Going forward, I think the planning board as a board should select or decide how they want to move forward with the master plan. And at my thoughts were that each year, it doesn't have to be the same committee, but each year there's a master plan committee appointed for the one-year term. And they review anywhere from one to three chapters or whatever they feel they can handle in that year and bring forward each, by each September. Those, because it's a living document in actuality. They bring forward any tweaks, any updates in data that would change a certain chapter, let's say. And the mass, the planning board reviews and accepts that plan to move, to move towards the special meeting. This way, every year we have an update. And every time we go for a different grant, because hopefully we'll be going for a grant yearly for something. We'll have a document that was just tweaked the year before. So everything is more or less always current. And that's, that's my wrap up on that, appointing the committee and, and moving forward.
Okay, but let me back up. So why don't we finish off at least transportation this evening before we get into climate adaption? So I, I just have one other comment, and maybe it's just me, but on the recommendations where the town should promote, I didn't know what a gig worker was.
I had that too.
Right.
I had to Google it.
Oh, is it actually a word?
It's act, yeah, it actually means something. It's, it's basically someone that goes from gig to gig to gig to gig. Sort of like a consultant or, or
This doesn't sound like Townsend workers. I don't know.
Sounds like transient musicians.
Yeah.
Well, it could be any form of consultant. You know, doing different
Yeah. So does anyone else have any other comments for, on transportation? And I'm happy to meet any other night this week except for tomorrow night. If you want to do, if you want to continue on, on this. Or probably, go ahead, Carol.
I just had one more comment up above where it's, I think, where it says that RF RRFB is a candidate for Route 119 in the post office. Is that the sign that lights up, the crossing sign that has the little lights on it? Is that what that is right here? It says RRFB.
Oh, yeah.
Is that the lighted crosswalks? I'm not sure what an RRFB is.
Yeah, that's a good question. Do they spell out the acronym anywhere? Yeah, that's a good question. Do they spell out the acronym anywhere?
I don't know if I saw what that is.
Yeah, I think that needs to be.
If it's the sign that lights up for a crosswalk, I was gonna say we should maybe add Sterilite where.
Oh, it's, it's, it's basically defined, it's defined up above. It's a rapid flashing beacon.
Okay, so my.
Oh, a rectangular rapid flash.
I was gonna say, you got another R.
I was gonna say maybe you should put, add Sterilite, the crosswalk at the Sterilite company on 119 because that's a horrible. People don't.
But doesn't, but doesn't it have a yellow flasher there?
Yes, no, I don't think so.
No, it does.
Oh, I didn't.
I think it does.
Does it have a flasher? I've never seen it flash.
We could just take a.
Well, it probably should. Doesn't.
I mean, there's a crosswalk sign there, but people don't always stop as they go flying down 119. And I'm always feeling bad for the workers. And I thought if there was a flashing, one that flashed, at least you'd see it coming, coming down the road. That was my only comment. But if it already flashes, I've never seen it flash.
Yeah, I agree with you that there should be one if, if there's not one there.
Okay, and put that comment in there as well. What I was wondering too is the, the tip projects. I'm not familiar with the tip project of resurfacing and related work on Route 119. I don't know where that came from because I never have heard that talked about in the tip program at the MJTC meetings. So I'm just gonna ask to, or comment on source on that. It's not something I've seen. Might have been an old report.
Okay, and then just let me sort of, any other comments before we, we stop this review? So one thing I think that, it was a comment that Julie made, Beth, that I think is probably the most important comment that I've heard, and that is the format of the document needs to be compatible with the state requirements. And I would strongly urge the master plan committee to look at the Pepperell master plan and sort of model our master plan on it.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know if everyone else agrees with it, but I think that, you know, that's, that's something. And then Beth, you'll like send out some email on when we can reconvene to go through the rest of this?
Sure.
Because I mean, we still have, I think, you know, as Julie said, a lot of meat to go through.
Can, Carol and Julie, can you make it Thursday night?
I can.
I'm not sure. Give me one minute.
And then maybe Michael can.
Yeah, he has a lot of catching up to do.
I'm, I'm volunteering up at the concert on Thursday night.
Oh, geez.
It's the, I'm the baker, I gotta bake and get stuff up there for 6:30 and.
And I'm on vacation next week. So if, if we, if Mike, Mike wants to jump in and, as a clerk, and collect comments.
Is Wednesday not available?
I'm not available on Wednesday. I have a condo meeting.
And we'd have to post 48 hours.
Oh, yeah.
So that's why I said Thursday. Is there, could we meet earlier? And Julie, how are, how early are you available?
This is like the one week I'm in a training class till like five o'clock every night, unfortunately.
So Lori, one of your comments, I just wanted to mention that this current draft is being, I assume, reviewed by MRPC because it was sent to Karen Chapman, right? I noticed you mentioned earlier that you thought that MRPC wasn't reviewing is, because right now we sent.
She's gonna look at it. She's gonna look at it, but I don't know what her review is gonna entail, but that it has the mandated documents that are needed, the parts that are needed.
Not sure exactly what she's doing right now or what MRPC is doing in terms of review.
I'm gonna see if Michael is available Thursday.
What about, what about Friday?
I could do Friday.
I can.
I can do Friday.
Okay, um, you want to just do that?
Yeah, let's.
He's.
Do Friday, Beth?
Sure.
And are you still in training until on Friday, Julie?
Actually, that's the day it ends a little bit earlier. So I, anytime after four.
Oh, no. Oh, he's not. He's, he's a groomsman in the wedding. They're in Maine. We leave Thursday morning back Sunday. All right, forget him.
Yeah, so anytime after four on Friday.
Yeah, I can. Do you want to do? Well, when do you guys want to do? Anytime after four and figure we, we need two or three. I don't, I don't think the rest of it will take as long as we did tonight. Do you? I mean, I don't think, I don't think it'll be more than two hours. I pretty much know what I want to say on housing and I don't have much to say on the climate thing at all.
Okay, well, the earlier we start, the better then.
I'm good with four.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, so then we're, we're, we don't know if TCAM can, but if you can get that posted for four o'clock on Friday, we will continue our review, I guess.
So we could probably just ask Hartley right now if he's listening.
Yeah, I'm listening. So you're proposing this coming Friday, the sixth, 4:00 PM? Okay, um, right now, according to what I see here on my schedule, I don't have any other events I need to cover then. We're talking this Friday, the sixth, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so please contact the TCAM board and confirm it with them. And then they'll get back to me and I will post the Zoom links for you.
Okay. Beth, you're gonna pass everything we did tonight along, right?
Yes.
Okay, and this way we're not hoping up those anyway. And so hopefully we get it finished. So Lance, did you want to? Do you want a motion to reappoint the board?
Yes.
Um. Okay, I don't. Do we have that in our email with the names, Beth?
Why don't I do it this way? Can I have a motion to reappoint the master plan committee members consisting of Kim Craven, Karen Clement, Bill Wrightout, Cynthia Donovan, Schuster, Don Hayes, Todd Malanson, and Andrea Wood?
I still move. Laura Schiffern.
I'll second you.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
All right, Julie, how do you vote?
Julie Barres, yes. Laura Schiffern, yes.
Carol Hoff says yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Lance? McNally, yes. Okay, Beth, can we postpone the review of the maps? Oh, no, closes on eight, six. Never mind.
Yeah, you can just send me comments individually if you'd like.
On the maps?
Yes, the sidewalks and the rail trail.
I have a chance.
On the sidewalk map, I didn't see any future sidewalks.
No futures, yeah. I don't know, yeah, I mean.
I could send you that comment, but that was the only thing I noticed.
Yeah, the highway department is gonna review this too, but I also should probably send it to Cemetery and Parks, right? Because they do sidewalks as well. So I'll send it to Roger at Cemetery and Parks.
And I don't have anything other than that on that.
Okay.
Lance? Okay. Yes.
Before you go, I'd like to thank you for all your work tonight.
Oh.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you. You're welcome, Andrea. And thank you for the master plan committee and all the work that you put into this.
Oh, they worked much harder than I did. I was just kind of an also ran.
During? But your participation is always good. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and Julie, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, and Lance, yes. Have a good night, everyone.
You too. Thank you so much. Bye bye.
All right, bye bye.